Welcome to the regular meeting of the Swan Village Board of Trustees for Monday, April 11, 2022. We have Zoom on. We have Elizabeth, the only one on Zoom right now. But first order of business, I'd like to have everybody stand and pledge their flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good calculations. So any reviews to our agenda this evening, revisions? Is this on? Executive session.
That's for number five.
Executive session, okay.
The High Gate isn't here, so we can have a high-level discussion just to say, you know.
Do you want to leave that at number five or after?
Yeah, we can leave it at number five.
Okay. So.
Personnel, yes. Personnel on number 12.
Okay, so we're going to have two executive sessions.
Well, this won't be an executive session. We won't go into the executive session because we won't discuss the contract.
Yep, yep. You just told me that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, so next on the agenda, Janet Dimick requests permission to hold the Gathering of the Realms with alcohol sales, bonfire, and overnight camping at Swan Rock Fields in September. Update from economical, that's different. So you're on the floor. Does anybody have any questions for Janet?
Sorry, I have it up for you, Jen, in case you wanted to see it. For that lineup.
I would like to start by thanking you for reading the letter last night, Reggie, and for the trustees for discussing it while I was not able to attend. I do appreciate that honor that you gave to us. Since then, I have spoken briefly with Reg, with Diane, and with the town manager, Brian Savage. And between that and my co-chairs, we came up with the vendor application. And I was on the screen the brief days of events so that you could have a chance to review and bring questions to me tonight.
September 10. It says performers display. What kind of performance are they displaying? I mean.
This is a very quick, brief. It's a very quick, brief markup. The type of performance we have will depend on whether we're able to offer performers the overnight availability to stay on site. We are looking at the local society for... There goes my nerves. The SCA that are, I think, would like to do a 15th-century encampment. And some of that performance would be them demonstrating 15th-century warfare, night fighting, swordplay. They can also be as simple as we'd like to invite some dancers, whether they're ballet dancers or sword dancers, fire dancers, jugglers, stilwalkers, any type of performers that would like to attend. So this is just as brief as we could give without fleshing it out, not knowing who will attend until I have the specifics to give them to decide whether they would like to attend.
So are these all... Do you know if these would all be in-state acts from performers or out-of-state or?
I'm trying to be as much as Vermont as possible. One of the questions that you had in the last discussion was how many people would be attending. And it's difficult to judge because there are four large Renaissance fairs going on that weekend. And we are brand-new. I've had a very, about an hour's discussion with Brian Savage. And between him and I, we were pretty comfortable saying there's going to be about 2,000 people. So no bigger than, you know, what happened for the last spectacular that we had in the middle of town. That was one day, and this is two days.
Where are we going to park all those cars?
That I am working on. I do need to have a discussion once I know that I'm able to go ahead. I need to speak with the chief. There is some onsite parking that I can see. I haven't had a chance to actually walk the grounds to map it out yet. But probably would involve requesting permission to use the elementary school parking or the parking at the Fourth Street question area and have them walk down the rail trail to come.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
You've got on your general rules and guidelines, smoking in a designated area?
All right.
A...
I'm not sure which version you have. I... One of the ones involved in working with this is Nicole Draper from the Rec Department. And she says the onsite, there is no smoking allowed whatsoever.
That was my question.
So we need to figure out where a designated smoking area would be. It may not be, that may be changed to no smoking. And I wanted to include these cigarettes because we don't want to encourage any type of... So at the moment, it's only designated. I don't have an idea for designated. That may just be no smoking allowed whatsoever.
Okay.
And that is for both the performers, the vendors, as well as the attendees.
Yep, okay. The certificate of insurance you've got is required by all merchants, obviously. Is the Swan Nerd Council going to provide one, just as a general umbrella?
We have to over-arcing one.
Yep.
And I don't have the proper legal verbiage. That was something that I spoke with Brian as well. And because he had a lot to do with the previous Swanon Fair.
Festival, yeah.
And so for those two or three days, depending on how it lands as to what you're allowing us to do with the Gathering of the Realms, I do need to speak with our insurance carrier to explain that during that timeframe that the town and the village is added as your interest may be involved in that, so that you guys are covered on with us. I have not had a chance to reach that with the actual insurance company yet.
My other question was security. Have you talked with Chief Sullivan yet?
I haven't been able to speak to him yet. I, well, it's not that I haven't been able to, I haven't planned to speak with him yet, not knowing, again, what we're being allowed. If we're doing the overnight encampment for just the vendors and the actors. This is not someone's coming up from Manchester, Vermont, and camping on ground. This is just for those that will be performing. The SCA has built into their own rules and regulations, they have security of their own, which would benefit so that not everything would have to be manned by the local police. Also, talking with Brian, in the past, there had been some sort of contract so that they used the local police, and I think he said the sheriff's department, as part of theirs. And then again, that's another discussion to have with the chief to know what's going on there. But not knowing the full picture that I'm being allowed to by the trustees, I can't fully answer questions until I know what questions I need to ask.
And have you touched base with the business next to the Rec Field?
I have not in looking at it. It looks like it's going to involve two different streets that I need to approach. Now I can't see what I'm doing again.
How about that? How was that?
Blaker Street and Jewett Street. To speak with the members so that they know that it will be attended. Again, not knowing if we're going forward and what version is going forward in, I don't want to go forward and speak and then have to backpedal because something's changed. I'd rather know specifically for what I'm hoping for. So you guys get all the question marks. You tell me what the question marks are so that I can throw it up for everybody out of outdoors.
So I guess my last question is, what do you need from us? Is it simply permission for a two-day event?
I believe it's for the two-day event with the understanding that the vendors have the availability to stay overnight as well as the happening, encampment actors. And then any of the other performers that would strictly be there overnight, that the only electricity onsite would be needed for the specific vendors if we need to keep something cold or something properly hot so that the OSHA standards are kept in place for the food. And the fact that I need to speak to the fire chief about the bonfire, but I can't speak to him unless I know I can do one, as well as... I just lost my train of thought.
No, yeah, yeah, okay.
In talking with Brian and with yourselves, it's a very interesting history for that piece of land.
Yes.
So I very much enjoy even just learning about the land.
I have a couple of quick questions. We talked about parking, and that sounds like there's enough parking areas where people don't mind walking to get to the area. My assumption is that camping will be just for the vendors and for the actors, participants, or whatever we want to call it.
Yes.
We don't need to provide any services for them, extra electricity or... But I do think you've probably got to think about trash bins and portalets because, I mean, there's a bathroom, but it certainly won't handle 2,000 people.
No, we are not using anything other than the land and electricity. So there's no additional lights other than whatever we need for the cold, cold, and the hot, hot.
Yep.
We are going to be bringing in portalets for the event and then having them removed. And I'm trying to figure out what is the best way, but any trash comes in, it's going to go out as well. So it is our idea that Friday, we walk into the field, it's a nice, pretty field. Monday, you can walk into the field, like, well, there's people walk through here. And in three, four days, you can come again. It's like, you never knew we were even there.
I mean, the park sustains that all the time, so that's pretty good. I would think the trash deal, the, some of the local trash collectors probably have big bins that they could put on-site for you.
Oh, yeah.
Just got to make those arrangements. No, I think it's, sounds kind of cool, really. But 2,000 people, a lot of people.
We have a spectacular, believe it or not.
That's probably 1,200 cars. So that's, I mean, it could be 1,000.
We'd have many at the car show. We get 2,000 people at the car show come through.
I think that's the point, the place to be. So that's okay, that's a good point.
Yes. And my question, though, do you anticipate those 2,000 perhaps being there once at certain times? I know it's a difficult question.
Based on what the event...
With the car show, people are going in and out for two days. So, you know, I have 1,000 there all morning. This is possible in this case, where you're at 1,000.
It's going to be a mix. You probably will find a good number that will want to be there from, over the clothes. But then you'll also have those that's like, oh, I'm curious, never been to one, let me walk through, see a little bit of the history, maybe see a sword fight, look through the vendors, and then leave. So it's.
It's hard to know.
A good mix.
Yeah, it's hard to know.
It really is.
I think there would be enough space to print some demand for. But you haven't spoken to the chief yet.
That's the big part to go next, yes.
I hope, you know, that can be done soon. It's really the only question I had. After listening to the other ones, I don't have anymore.
Did you have another one, Chris?
Well, how much advertising are you going to do for this? I mean, will there be just posters or will it be TV ads?
We'd like to get it into the area of being a few posters beyond, like, WOKO, the radio, our local... No, just access. To have a draw is brand-new, so we do want a good draw, but we don't want to overdraw. So that's a discussion. We're trying to find a middle ground so that we can have an awesome event so that I can come back to you, hey, this is what happened. And we're all just extremely excited about seeing it again next year. Of course, the other is, it happened, I come back, it's like, we all decided once was enough. Because it is brand-new, it's breaking new ground for everyone. As Diane created the permit paper, so I have a checklist to work through and such. So it's a learning experience.
What other areas did you consider? I mean, the airport or?
I did try calling up there. They had one date available. And since then, they have removed even the local fair that goes there. That's completely off-limits now. In talking with Nicole Draper, she did have a couple alternatives. If the Rec Department didn't go with it, I don't know what those alternative alternatives were though.
Okay, well, I'm excited to have it in Swanon, but I...
Have they given their blessing?
They have. I started with her. And then I got a little confused because when talking with her, I thought I was talking to her as the Slapboard and as well as the Rec Department. And it was only this day in Rec Department. So I've been having discussions with Brian next Tuesday at their meeting. This will also be brought up and discussed with them as well because, again, it's interesting property, equal ownerships, equal...
What was I saying?
Equal interest in it as well, yeah.
That's all I have for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
If you're reviewing my notes here, and you said, I think that there's four other gatherings on the same weekend?
Yes.
Are they in the area or?
Pennsylvania, further into New York, I believe Connecticut.
So you're talking about New York City area, Newburgh, I don't know.
Big ones that have draws that are there for the full week or longer where you've got an actual village built up for it.
So none of these are in Vermont, I don't think.
This would be the second event like this in Vermont. The first one is held in June at... I want to say it's in Stowe. And that one is more vendor than activity, where this one, I would like to be stronger on the activity and bring more of the history and culture to it.
So you're not going to have a lot of competition from Pennsylvania?
No. But that's also where a lot of the performers are too. So again, it's not going to be overly large.
I see. There would be competition for that. Thanks.
Thank you.
So Janet, is there a fee for entry here or?
At the moment, we plan to have it as no fee because it's difficult. It's open ground, so anyone can just like walk in. We do intend to rope off the area. We want to keep people out of certain grounds, and we want to keep them out of the garden. We want to keep them out of the wetlands. Thinking about roping off the end of the rail trail, depending on how we do. The chief and I get a chance to speak, so we can have the encampment at that end. And the encampment doesn't have to worry about people coming out from both sides. The parking, we are looking to do a fee. That would be the, like, $50 per car, just to accommodate the vehicles themselves, not to deter anyone from actually attending. So there's no fee for the fair itself. It's just come in and enjoy it. But the idea is to make some money so that it's a break-even point so that it doesn't cost anyone anyone anywhere at the end.
That's my next question. Who paid up for this? Is this, are there grants that you have for this or?
Starting out with, you have the vendors' fees. Each vendor is expected to police their own booth if they want to pay for the policeman, for someone else to do it. Again, that's written in the vendors. Some of the actors may pay, depending on what they're trying to do as to whether they want it specifically. I want to rent a booth area, and I want it enclosed so that people come through. A curtain to see me type thing versus just, you know, out in the open. I am in the process of doing a grant. I want to be able to provide the community meal as the spectacular has done in the past. So there are some grades I am pursuing. Some of it will be hopefully in sponsorship through advertising and such. So a lot of what Adam does for the car show, but on a smaller scale.
2,000 people is not a small scale.
Yeah, I'm learning that. I thought this was just an easy, quick-ass two-day event, one day cleanup, and it's like, wow. I haven't found it as an interesting challenge. It's going to be a wonderful day. Two days.
Two days, yeah. Okay, so you needed more from us, like Adam said, tonight or?
Any further questions? Is there anything else? I will get in touch with our insurance company then. And.
Police?
Probably have that go through you, Reggie, for warning to make sure that that's properly covered for the village as well as for the town. I need to speak with the chief of police as well as the fire chief and, I'm not going to say this right, Miss Ciscoy Valley Rescue because that's going to be involved as well. Good. I need to then tie up, make sure that I've got the portalets and the rubbish, as well as getting all the advertisement out and start signing people up.
Certainly come a long ways from the last meeting here. Sounds like you've addressed all the issues, or most of the issues that we had concern with, so. But so I guess it's a goal. And if you have to inform us of anything else, you're owing me a beat, or we can get ahold of you, whatever.
We do need approval for the alcohol sales. That would have to be approved very fast.
Okay, so we need a motion? To approve the alcohol sale? So move.
I mean.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the sale of alcohol at the Gathering of the Realms for the two days in September.
I have a question. Do we need a motion to even further approve the thing in general? I know that has nothing to do with the current motion, but...
No. But we can do that too. Well, let's finish this motion first. Any discussion on the alcohol? Okay.
Okay, pending discussions with chief.
There were some rules on the alcohol.
Yes, it's going to be one area.
Those are in play.
And it's going to be the double barrier. So you've got the orange or the green, and then you've got a second green or green. So they're the dead man's land, so it's not just, oh, hey, I'm going to hop the rope and get in type thing. The person at the gates letting people in will be trained to read IDs proper, as well as the insurance falls also on the vendors that will be there. We hope to have meery, cidery, and wierie. And possibly some beer as well.
Nice. Something like this would need me.
That's where the meery comes in.
Okay, the motion's on the floor and seconded. Discussion's over. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Okay, the motion's carried unanimously. And I guess we should probably entertain a motion to approve the Gathering of the Realms for the two days in September 10.
September 10th and 11th, yep. I'll make that motion as well.
I'll second that one too.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to go ahead with the Gathering of the Realms. Is it night, 10th? No, 10th and 11th of September. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposition. Motion's carried unanimously, so stay tuned.
Thank you, gentlemen. I will definitely keep you apprised.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
So next item on the agenda, executive session to discuss contracts, which is about to happen tonight. I hear it.
Oh, you got the update from Elizabeth. Update from Elizabeth.
You forgot me.
Oh. No, I didn't forget you. I just wondered if you were still awake. So anyway. Update from our economic development coordinator.
Hi there.
Our downtown, yeah, this is an important deal. I said, yeah, this is an important deal. So go for it.
So I have a couple of things. I have an update on the Riviera Hotel, because I know you're going to ask me anyway.
No.
So on Thursday, March 24th, Bredda at Regional Finance got approval from the Department of Environmental Conservation to use the ACCD Brown, I'm reading off or you know, in case you're wondering, to use the ACCD Brown Fields Assessment Fund that will all be used for the Phase II environmental site assessment. So the, so good news, we're one, that's one step closer. And then in a follow-up email, there has been some changes to the procurement process. So they couldn't just go with KAS who did the Phase 1 and did the estimate for the Phase 2. It's kind of like a mini RFP. The notice to proceed should have been issued Friday. It's not. It's today. I'm going to double-check with Bredda, make sure that's on task. They anticipate that the start of the Phase 2 assessment will begin by the end of May. There's a 30-day EPA approval that has to be done. So as soon as we can see the Phase 2 started, it's at the end of May. So hopefully, we'll see some progress there before Memorial Day. And then last, we've got four pages of notes here. Last but not least, make sure I have it already emailed. This one's a little lengthier. They anticipate that we'll have to abate and dispose of hazardous building materials, which is not a surprise to anybody who knows the state and age of the building. Bredda said on this past Friday that they anticipate the abatement and the demolition could be implemented on a concert with each other. I'm not making any guarantees or promises about when demolition will happen, but there should be significant movement this summer. Barring anything unforeseen, I think we all know it's building materials. So I'm hopeful that we'll see some real progress by the fall.
If it doesn't come down to it.
That is my Riviera Hotel update.
Good.
Thank you.
Well, it's moving. Better late than never.
It's been a frustrating process, and it doesn't help that they've changed the state. Apparently, it's changed their procurement process. And then you have to go through the CPA approval process, which she says contains about 30 days. If we learn nothing else out of this process, it's patience, which is not my strong suit. But, you know, we, between Reg and I, we keep emailing and kind of nagging just to make sure that we're moving this forward. We're going to have a meeting with DEC in the next few weeks just to kind of plan out next steps and just make sure that we can keep the project on task.
Good.
Do you have downtown sculpting?
That was next. I was just making sure there were no questions. So I have what I hope is really good news. I consider it really good news. The VTrans Transportation Alternatives Grant that the village applied for in November got word two weeks ago now that funding was fully approved. So $375,000 to implement those portions of the downtown sculpting study. And if you recall, that's the always stop at the First Street Grand Avenue. It's to shorten the crosswalk from the gas station to the park across Grand Avenue. It's to relocate the crosswalk from the Ace Hardware slot, Chamber of Commerce, to Murchison's Row Crosswalk. Because that's at the top of the dangerous hill. And that is the design and construction of the sidewalk adjacent to Murchison's Row. So I looked at the list of projects. We were the only, frankly, county. So I looked at the list of projects. We, we were the only Franklin County project that was awarded funds. So EAS, that's one.
Thank you. Good for you.
I, I. Sorry. I was beyond excited. Um, Ryan Savage actually got the email to my old email address and he called me. About a grant and I was like, oh, it's the village, I know what that is. And so I immediately called Reg and Neil and a couple of other folks, because I was so excited. And I had a really bad commute into work that day. Um, may my, may my way. I, I'm terribly excited to, to get a chance to, to move this project forward. So here's the. I don't want to say sticking point, because that's not the word I mean, but here's. So this, so out of the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, the seventy-five thousand is the, the twenty percent match. That the village is required to put up. Through the design and construction phase, which is in the last three, four, five years. If you recall, the agreed, the plan was to put the match on the ballot in March. That didn't happen. So um, Reg and I had Bethany Roberts on and call about um, something else. And talked to her just to get, make sure I have the numbers right in my head. So we're anticipating the design portion will be about thirty thousand. So twenty percent of that thirty, then that would be the upfront costs basically. Um, obviously, because you design first and construct later, hopefully. So we're anticipating the design cost to be about thirty thousand, twenty percent of thirty thousand is six thousand. We anticipate that given the timeframe um. Of when things were actually gonna happen, because we're already into April. And a lot of the RFPs have already gone out um, anticipating summer work. That, that the village in this current budget year that ends December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. We would need to come up with twenty-five hundred to four thousand for this year in the current budget. You could use ARPA funds. I will just throw that out there.
Okay.
It is an eligible expense. They have so loosened the um. The eligibility that you can, you can use it for just about anything as long as you, you know. Claim a, a, some kind of COVID. Um, and this is public health. So um, we are all in agreement that you could use ARPA funds.
What about the CBDG monies? Could those be used in this area? No?
And that's a loan. The CBDG funds are loans.
Right. I'm just, I'm just trying to.
No, because it's only, it can only be used for water sewer upgrades. Or physically new sidewalks.
Which Merchants Row would get?
Well, and I think that the issue, correct if I'm wrong, Lynn, is typically you can't use federal funds. And in the end, your CWDG are federal funds. Have you rolled it over? Does that?
No, these, these would be funds that were paid back.
Okay.
So these are, these are new CBDG funds.
Obviously, I'd wanna use the ARPA funds if we could.
Right, because I mean, this is, these are loaned monies.
Yeah, well, I understand. Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure that question is answered, that's all.
One of the reasons why they didn't get on the ballot is how are we gonna put on the ballot?
Right.
To support something we haven't got.
Right.
We didn't know we didn't want to get this.
Yep.
We're the only ones in Franklin County to get it.
Yep.
So in understanding when that was gonna happen in March, this vote, and knowing how construction season was gonna go. Anticipation was, we weren't gonna be starting anything until twenty-three anyway.
That's true. Is there an end date to the grant?
Next question.
Drop dead question?
I'm not sure I understand.
Is there, is there a timeframe?
Oh, um, they don't expect that construction will happen for four years.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome. The other thing is, and I will throw this out here, and I'm, I'm kind of loathe to do it, because I, I. But I think we all want the project to move forward. Bethany did say that there's been a change. Typically, if you are awarded funds and you expend some of those funds during the design phase. And you opt not to go through with construction for whatever reason, like. You know, money issues or whatever. Excuse me. They used to require that you give back all the money. Not just the match, but any of the federal funds that you've expended. That has changed. So let's say you start the design process and you get all the way up to right away issues, which. I don't know that we'll have any based on the nature of the process, but. You have a much longer period before you would have to give back any funds that you may have expended. I don't anticipate, if you're gonna move forward with design, I would suspect you're gonna move forward with construction. It just doesn't make sense not to. But that is just something I, I will throw out there. I have a bias. You know, I think it's a great project and I, I think we've talked about this for twenty-plus years. And it's, it's nice to finally get to a point where we can do some implementation.
Oh, for sure. Okay.
Is there a concern that the, that the three seventy-five may not be enough?
No, I, we, the. DHB did the, the budget. And we talked about the numbers and they are confident in the numbers now, of course. With costs going the way they are.
Uh, that's why I'm asking, yeah.
Yeah, um. I, I think that's always a chance you take, you know, when you go, when you have multi-year projects like this. But the costs aren't gonna go down any.
Right.
That's fair.
We decided.
The other, the other, and I, I think I'm about to sit in the dark, I'm sorry. Um. The other thing we can consider is um. You can ask for, I'm, I'm double checking myself. I get this in the bike pad. So there is another grant program that we could potentially look at, um, either this year or next. Or further down the road, if you say for some reason um. It's gonna cost more than, than we expected it to. So we're not locked in. I know bike pad allows you to um, ask for increases. If, if you do run into cost overruns.
So I mean, I would, I would argue that we got a few years to complete this.
Right.
I mean, the sidewalk or the crossings, we got our own paint machine, you know.
Just gets the paint.
As soon as, yeah. As soon as the design is done.
Right.
I mean, we can, you'll ask the guys, what part of this can you do? What you think you can't do within the summer projects? And they'll tell us, or they'll tell me, and we go from there. So some of this stuff could be done in-house. The other part that may be a little stickler is the Merchants Row sidewalk in front. And we need to, if nothing else, we need to get a hold of merchants and see what their flavor is, but we need to do handicap accessibility to that Merchants Row area. So.
They're gonna get some merchants in there first.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We gotta get some merchants in there first.
So I mean, it could be the last leg of the project.
Yeah, I anticipate the easiest three, right, would be moving the crosswalk, shortening the other crosswalk and then the freeway stop, which. I think we had planned to make that temporary, the, the always stop to make that temporary. Just before we expend a ton of money, relatively speaking.
Yeah.
Making it permanent, test it out first. So those would be the, I think, the three first projects um, to undertake.
I think that's a good idea. Let's see.
All right.
Thank you. Reg, Neil, can I, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead Gordon.
Can you hear me starting? Elizabeth, can you, can you just clarify uh, Merchants Row uh, for us, just uh. There's no concrete design for that yet and that would involve. You, the design team and all the, all the owners of Merchants Row collaborating on a design for that.
Right. Correct. So I, I think there will be some level of, of public engagement. Obviously, we're not gonna relitigate um, everything that we've already determined out of the sculpting study, but this will narrow it down.
Right.
And, you know, pull people in, um, the merchants. Uh, and I know I would argue maybe um. Yeah, you know, some interested, interested parties um, is to make sure that what we're doing doesn't. We don't screw something up trying to get it right.
Right, so we wanna make sure all the merchants are involved and that we're. They'll, they'll have input on what we do to the sidewalk or what's done to the sidewalk to make it handicap accessible.
And I guess. Right, and just for clarity, it would be property owners and merchants, because they're not necessarily one of the same.
Right, correct.
Yes.
Great. Uh, thank you for letting me get in there.
Okay. Gordon's still on? He's gone, I guess.
Yeah, thank you Neil.
Yeah, okay. Um, and I wanna thank Elizabeth for all her hard, hard work, uh, bringing this through. And uh, like you said, it's pretty exciting that we were the only ones in Franklin County to get the, the grant. And uh, uh, we, we can move forward as fast as they'll let us, I guess, so. But uh, it's a, it's really good news, so.
Yeah, thank you. Again, really excited. That narrative, I think if we can get some visual process progress, um, that'll make a huge difference.
Yes, for all means, so. Okay, thank you. Is, is that all you had, Elizabeth?
It is. Um, so Reg, did you print out the project commitment form?
No.
Okay, um.
Did you send that to me today?
I, yeah, I sent it to you after we talked with Bethany. You asked, I wouldn't give the three under the bus.
You can throw me under the bus, it doesn't break my heart.
Yeah, that was wild. And I, I, so I bring that up, I'm just, I guess, um. There is a project commitment form that says that the, the village is willing to move forward with the project. Hence the name project commitment form. So I guess I would just ask, do you, um, are you comfortable with that being signed? Or um, do you need more information?
Hey, I'm pulling it up now.
Okay, I'm gonna go through the layout too. Um, I don't know, I don't know how much that helped, but.
Looks pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I mean, we already know.
It's not the grant agreement, and the grant agreement will obviously be a little lengthier. This just is basically out here.
I think it's authorized, authorized municipal official, so they could nominate me and assign this. Okay.
Okay, so we can do that?
Yep.
Is there one form?
Just one form.
One form?
Right now, yeah, we, uh, we're still early in the process, so there will be other forms um, that will be brought into you as appropriate.
Okay, what, what's this form called?
It is.
Project Commitment Form.
Project.
Ready for a motion?
Okay, so we need a motion to uh, authorize Reg to sign the project commitment form. From the State Department of the Agency of Transportation.
I'll make that motion. I would second it. So we have. I'm obvious that, that the full board is one hundred percent behind the project.
Yeah. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to authorize Reg Belho to sign uh, for the approval of a go-ahead for uh, this project. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed, motion's carried unanimously. So, they signed it, send it to her.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, and the last thing I'll say before I go is just that this is the first, I guess, is the implementation. You know, I expect. There were some other things that came out of the feasibility study. But I think it's a, it's a great start and we'll keep pushing forward with everything else.
Yeah.
Thank you.
For sure. Okay, thank you Elizabeth.
Thank you Elizabeth.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So, next item. Executive session to discuss contracts. So, no revision to that?
Yeah, so Highgate wasn't able to make it tonight. Uh, one had to work, another one wasn't feeling that great, so. Uh, and we just received Highgate's this afternoon and ours this morning back from the attorneys. So we had a discussion with Heidi, they said we can't really have the trustees act on something they haven't seen yet. So give you folks a chance to dissect that. So we may, uh, we may hold another meeting, uh, under executive session for contracts, because it is a contract. Uh, a separate meeting rather than having it on our twenty-fifth meeting. Because it could take a while to muddle through the.
Yeah.
The, the nuances and bolts of this.
This is the old one, right?
I still want Highgate just sent us.
Okay. Is this new?
That's new one. Yep.
And this is?
Our.
Our. They're, they're complementing each other, we'll find out.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Yeah, so the one that's long. The longer one is Swan, so we used our Eli Emerson for ours and Highgate used Adrian for theirs. So uh, there's no conflicts of attorneys crossing borders. Yeah.
So we'll discuss that on future date.
Yep.
Special meeting?
I think it would be best in a special meeting.
Agreed. In line with that, we had Matt a month ago, this man, Matt, who's, how to say his last name?
Yes, for the EDA.
EDA, how is that working out?
So one of the things that they're waiting on is this as well.
Okay. So no, no news is good?
No news at this point, yes.
Good. Thank you. Hi, that was on my list.
Okay.
Okay, item number six, uh, approve, it's all set right, Reg?
Yes.
Approve and accept the minutes from our Monday, March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two uh, meeting as presented.
I would make that motion and just add. Much of what we discussed tonight was also discussed at that meeting with the relationship to the, to the. Meeting of the Realms Festival.
And I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve and accept the minutes from Monday, March twenty-first. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed, the motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. Item number seven, approve and accept our village warrants through Thursday, April seventh, two thousand twenty-two. What's your pleasure on the warrants?
I hope they be approved.
And I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve and accept the village warrants through Thursday, April seventh.
Any discussion?
One question. Warrant number thirty, line number two, eight, four, seven, two, seven for AED brands. Oh, yeah.
So we've.
Upset.
So this, yeah, so we went through a safety day with uh, pretty much all the staff. We learned AED, first aid and CPI.
That's part of the wall over there.
Yep, so with that, we noticed that we didn't have AEDs in this room and in the garage area.
Or out front.
Or out front. So we have three AEDs in this building. So we have three AEDs in this building, and then we have some new ones in the Lightning trucks. And we're looking at two more for the Public Works and the Plows, so.
Perfect, awesome, thank you.
So, we're all trained, we're all trained in AED and CPR, so.
Highgate's house?
Uh, yes, I believe there is one up there.
Great.
So that's what that's for.
Perfect.
So, okay.
That's my involvement.
Any other questions about the orders? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion's carried unanimously. Thank you for that. Item number eight, lease cruiser discussion. I'm assuming you've got something to say about that?
So, in the budget for this year, we had put in place to lease another cruiser, anticipating that we'd order it after the annual meeting, providing the budget's passed, and it would be arriving in the vicinity of October. So when all that happened, as far as Donnie went to look at getting quotes and stuff from vendors, when he originally started looking at it for pricing for me for the budget, we knew that the Dodge Durangos had already closed their window on the 2022 orders. As he was getting ready to like do a final spec and wanted to purchase or order a Ford Explorer with the cruiser package, they had already closed their window for 2022 and they don't know when they're opening it for 2023. So then he went on the hunt for one that was already somewhere. So out in New York, he found a Dodge Durango Cruiser on a lot to 2022 that we can get now. So the dilemma is, I only have three months of lease payments in the budget. This would bring us to nine months of lease payments, which would, about a $10,000 hit. So.
On the budget.
So what he, the vendor, the vendor out there in New York, the leasing company that they deal with for their municipal leasing allows you to either prepay your lease, which is what we usually do, where you always purchase a month ahead, or do it retroactively. So we can set this lease up, then we can get the cruiser this year like we planned, and we can make the first payment in the first quarter of 2023. So, it lags us a little bit on the, on the back end. Looking at the pricing for the leasing company that I typically have used here, and they always, you know, we always purchase a month ahead or lease ahead, the difference between that lease on an annual basis and the lease that Donnie got me the numbers on, it's a difference of $426 a year difference. So, I'm, you know, what I, because I told Donnie, this is different than what we planned for in the budget, that I wanted to bring it up to you guys. So the 2022 Durango is available now. The guy said he's got cruisers that come in, he just never knows when they're, it sounds like he has like a standing order, he just never knows when they're gonna like get shipped to him from the company. So we can gamble and wait longer into the year, or we can, you know, lease the one that he's got right now.
What's the status of the lease of the car that it's replacing?
We've paid that lease off. So, currently in our fleet, we have five cruisers in total. So we have three in our normal fleet, that's three Explorers. We have one K-9 Cruiser, because when we took on the K-9, we had to have a dead-end K-9 car for the dog cage and everything, and that isn't a Pal, I believe. It's a sedan, or, yeah, or a Tourist, the Tourist. And then we have our Stone Garden Cruiser, which is also an Explorer. The Stone Garden Cruiser can only be used on grant details for Stone Garden, so we can't use it on normal patrols. So what we have always historically done, when we've deviated from the historical, we've run into problems, but historically, we keep a cruiser for six years. And then by then, they're starting to cost us money. We usually get the new cruiser ordered and we run that old cruiser until something major Last year transmissions have gone in them. So the oldest cruiser we have in our fleet right now has, it's six years old, it's got about 100,000 miles on it. It's a 2017 Explorer that we put in service in 2016, 100,000 miles. The other cruisers are, I believe, the K-9 Cruiser's a 2016, and the other two, there's a 2019, and then the Stone Garden Cruiser and one of the other cruisers is a 2020.
So that's, since we got three cruisers we can use, one's dedicated to the K-9, which has less mileage, because it's only that one officer utilizing that one, not all three shifts.
And that K-9 Cruiser we purchased used when we got the dog from, I believe that one came out of New York, it was an officer's personally set up K-9 Cruiser, like he had personally bought it for his K-9. And I don't know if he came off the road or if the agency got him a cruiser, but it came when, you know, the backseat already set up for the dog and, you know, and we figured that with the miles on it and the age when we got it, it would last us, you know, should hopefully last us like the time we have scout.
Do we owe anything on any cruiser at this point?
No, I don't believe, I don't believe we do. The 2020 Cruiser that we purchased, we took the money out of the equipment savings account. Obviously, the Stone Garden Cruiser, they paid for 100%. The 2019, I believe that lease was paid off last year.
And what is the chief's preference at this point?
Pardon?
What is the chief's preference? To wait or to move forward now?
Um, he hasn't really given me a preference. And, you know, the gamble with waiting is, we may not end up with a cruiser until the middle of next year.
Right.
And if something catch up, happens to this older cruiser, then we're down to two. And like the other day, we had four cruisers on the road, and the explanation I had gotten was, we had four cruisers out on the road and the chief needed to go assist Public Works and he had to take, one alignment had to take him in to pick up. So, you know, we, we get tight, you know, it seems like we have a bigger fleet, but we get tight sometimes. We also have in our fleet the Stone Garden boat that we got two years ago on a grant. It was originally Franklin County's Stone Garden boat. They gave up the use of that and Border Patrol gave it to us through a grant. And there again, that's 100% paid for. When we work Stone Garden, our officers' salaries and like FICA and retirement and workman's costs are paid 100%, and we get paid mileage for, you know, for fuel and stuff.
That's why sometimes you, some people say, well, why is Swan Village's Cruiser out now, or is it on? It's Stone Garden.
Yeah, because Stone Garden, we can't pick and choose where we go. Border Patrol, because it is to assist Border Patrol, Border Patrol will tell you where you can go. Whereas the OP DUI distracted driving that we do isn't designed that way. And we have officers covering those, that too.
What is your preference?
I would prefer to do it this year. So, we've got one available, we know we can get it, as long as they didn't like sell it in the last day or so. I would prefer to do that because prices are going up and, you know, there might be another cruiser that comes in, but it might be $5,000, you know, we just don't know what the cost difference is gonna be compared to what this one. And this one, between the vehicle cost and the outfit, which is, you know, putting the cage in and the decal and everything, it's at just under $55,000. So, not cheap, but when you think about what people are paying for vehicles, it's kind of right in line. And that includes your outfit.
Yes, it's radio lights, backseat cage.
So all I have are questions.
I agree with Lynn.
I think, yeah.
You got a motion?
Yeah.
Well, what's everybody else think?
I think it's fine.
I'll make the motion, we go ahead with the police cruiser lease as per this discussion.
Are you gonna defray the cost up till next year?
So what'll happen is, yeah, so the, we'll put the lease in effect so the first payment will happen in 2023. So, you know, it shifts the burden a little bit, but, you know, not dramatically.
Yeah, four hundred and twenty-six bucks.
Yeah.
That's one birthday cake a month, you get a give up.
I don't think that's a birthday egg.
That's saying.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to allow Lynn to go ahead with the lease of the new cruiser. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay, the motion's carried unanimously. So, we got the Dodge Durango. So, okay, thank you. Item number nine, this is for Chris. Acknowledge our first quarter SQRP report. What do you think of it, Chris?
Chris is recording. This is the Service Quality and Reliability Report. It's a report card internally, our own measure, we're not measured against any other utilities. It tells how well we're treating our customers and how well we're managing and running our operation and reports. How many outages we have, how many issues we have in the office, and we're running well under 100% at everywhere that's, I'm sure, a very favorable report. I would acknowledge that we saw it, we understand it, I seen no red flags, I seen no, no, no issues whatsoever, I.
One correction if I could?
Sure.
Third quarter, section five, there's a one there, probably should be in there.
Very good, we're only doing the first quarter.
I know, that's.
Yeah, I'll fix it.
Okay.
Oh, you've been talking about typo down there?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. I understand that, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Okay, no, I think we, we don't need a motion.
No.
We just acknowledge that we reviewed it, we see no actions needed, congratulate our, our office people as well as our line group. Thank you very much.
A lot of work.
Thank you, Chris. Item number 10, discussion on our performance.
This has to be a motion, right?
Yeah. So, the federal government relaxed the requirements for the ARPA funds. They are now recommending that anybody that received less than $10 million in funds to elect to take the special allowance, which is the loss of revenue, is what originally was for, less reporting than if we said we're gonna use it for water projects or sewer projects, or public health or whatever. So I sat through a seminar one day last week and put on my VLCT, and they were highly recommending everybody do it. First, reporting is due by the end of April, and that's when we have to elect whether or not we're taking the special allowance. So that's why I'm discussing it tonight, because we need to make a decision to take the special allowance or not, so, because it's a one-time election, and if I don't elect it on this first quarter, then we've lost the ability to take that election. Even if we take the special allowance, we can still use it for water or sewer projects. It doesn't say we can't, it just broadens what we can use it for.
I think the requirements are still the same, right? That you have to have a DUNS number.
Yeah, like, because this is a federal grant or federal money, we still have to have a DUNS number, which we already have. We have to be able to go in through treasury.gov, which I went in today, we've gotta still work through that, like, I can get into login.gov, but I can't get into treasury.gov yet until Reggie is the administrator, like, basically gives me access to it. And then we've got the reporting requirements to do. We don't have to, I don't have to let this report say what we're gonna spend it on. Some, some of the towns that were on that call have already spent some of their ARPA funds, so they walk through a little bit, like, you know, what they have to do, because this is the reporting that I will do when we start spending it and say we've, you know, we've designated, you know, X amount this quarter, or we've spent this amount this quarter. But we still, we still have a couple of years. I think by 20, the end of 2024 is when we have to say what we're gonna use it on, and then construct, I think it's the end of 2026.
Now, the contractor has to have DUNS also, right?
Yeah, anytime you work with federal money, you're, anybody that you are contracting with or anything like that, they have to have a DUNS number. They, we have to make sure they've not been disbarred from, from federal contracting. You know, it's just like, we're, we're gonna handle that just like it was any of our other federal grants.
Do you see a downside from doing this special or whatever?
No, because it's supposed to make it a lot easier, and it is, as far as reporting, and we've got a lot wider range of what we can spend the money on, instead of just, you know, water or sewer projects, we could do it on something else.
We're not getting over $10 million.
No. The only one in the state of the market that is, is Burlington, is the only one that I know of.
We need it more.
Yeah.
The town also approved this at their last meeting.
Yep. So what is our total amount?
Just over $700,000. They did say that public input, how they word, public input is not required, but should have some sort of public engagement, but ultimately, it's your governing board's decision.
Right.
So, I mean, at some point, we do need to, you know, we will have to have a public forum, you know, a discussion.
Right, please, so.
Yeah, I mean, exactly, you know.
So we can do a motion. So Lynn, go ahead with that.
Standard allowance.
Standard allowance.
I would make that motion. Is that the full second?
Yep.
The standard allowance, as presented by our contractor.
Okay, the motion been made and seconded to allow Lynn to go ahead with the special allowance procedure. We already discussed it, so all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion's carried unanimously. Keep it posted, Lynn. So, what was the meeting you had, the pep talk?
So, VLCT held a webinar on ARPA funds and how to do this quarterly report or this, yeah, this first report that we have to do. There was quite a few of us on, I believe, like, they had, as you can see all the attendees, but from the volume of questions coming in, I think they had a fair amount of people.
Yeah, I bet. Okay, well, that was a fun day, then.
It was like a half a day.
Okay, any other necessary business?
Just a reminder to folks, the Memorial Day Parade, the Swanton Community Memorial Day Parade is Monday, May 30th. It's either gonna be at 2:00 or 2:30, I'm not sure which time yet, but rain or shine, we're looking for folks to get involved, help out, be in the parade. We're planning a community free barbecue, a free community barbecue after the parade in the park, so looking for good attendance and hopefully gonna make this one of the better parades that we've had over the last three years. I did get one request from a couple of gentlemen about lining the bridge with some small flags like we did when we did the dedication. So, I said I would talk with the village manager at some point and report back to that in a year or so, for two weeks.
Where are the signs?
They'd just be a little.
Where are they? Do we have, we have any?
No, I'll get them donated, yeah, I'll get them donated or something.
These hardware house them.
These hardware house them, exactly. So, yeah, and then the flags for veterans are going up Memorial Day. So, yeah, and then the flag for veterans are going up Memorial Day weekend. That's Saturday, they'll be up for the week. And 150 of them this time, just like in November. So it's a, it's a very humbling experience to be able to be part of that, just telling you. That's all you got?
Okay, Jane?
Any news on the river trip here? Good luck.
That's still gonna happen in August.
It's gonna happen in August?
I mean, we did, so we did get bumped up on, so the tax meeting is supposed to happen Thursday. But I heard that we did get bumped up on the list as the one in Franklin County, so.
Okay, has there been a contractor assigned?
We already have that contractor assigned.
It's the same one, and he's agreed to.
Yeah.
Okay, that's important. Any news on the water line? I mean, that's not critical.
No, not yet.
It is up my agenda.
They're supposed to be coming down, so we could do another site visit to see another target spot for the river crossing.
Yeah, maybe we have to go upstream, I don't know. They'll think about it. Any summer help approaches yet?
I think we have one still that'll come back.
I don't know, I haven't talked to anybody about that.
Yeah, I think we have one coming back.
Well, that'd be good, if we could get experienced already.
Yeah, we'd like to have at least two, you know, helps out a lot.
Okay, that's it for now. I mean, we had a question. Here's Lynn.
Chris? I'm set, thank you. I'd like to just remind everybody that the town and village vote, and as well as the school budget vote, is on April 26. We have an informational meeting, joint informational meeting, no pun intended, joint informational meeting with the town and the village on a cannabis retail sale issue. We have some different speakers that are gonna be attending that. So if there's any questions on the retail sale that might come to Swanton, make sure to be at the informational meeting. And right now, a lot of people come out to vote this time. We didn't have very good turnout last time, so. And I'm sure the town will address the same issue. So informational meeting, the 21st, and the vote is on the 26th.
26th?
Yes, April 26th. Have anything?
Yes, not but that, but so Barton's voters, the Barton's trustees have voted to sell their utility, and they're choosing to sell it to Ramala Chikoa, who is a cooperative and not a public power utility.
We are, or just not municipal.
Just not municipal, okay. So that informational meeting for the community is gonna be Saturday at 3 o'clock in Barton. But I got up on the screen, the informational meeting that we're putting, or information that we're putting into, we have a Vepsa, into the newspaper. And then this section here just lays out, you know, that people should ask these questions. You know, you can see here what the average household monthly electric bill is. Ramala Chikoa is here, Barton Electric is here, Lyndonville is here, and Orleans Electric is here. So Orleans put in a bid also, and the trustees of Barton chose not to entertain it or consider their bid. Yeah.
I think the reason that Vepsa picked, when they looked at the graph on the rates, is Orleans is contiguous to Barton, and Lyndonville is just up the road. So that's, I think, why they compared those two, compared instead of using any of the other Vepsa members, is because those are the utilities that are close to Barton.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Do you have any?
And the same thing with the, you know, power outage length, hours.
Was Vepsa interested in some type of arrangement to purchase or have other members purchase it?
So.
Vepsa can't purchase it, but for the last few years, they've been helping Barton.
For a couple of years, right?
Yeah, for two years, we've been helping with management with Vepsa staff.
So it'd be nice to keep another utility in Vepsa that we will lose if they go to the coal.
That's my point, too. I would have a public utility anytime.
So this is one excerpt, just basically, will power outages be shorter? Questions asked, will my property taxes go down or up? Or going to go down? Will my waters, wastewater bills go down? Can you see all the offer, can we see all the offers that were considered? Because they're not contemplating, talking about Orleans bid.
What, what does Barton do with that money? Do they have any restrictions on that? Does that have to go back to the taxpayers, the owners?
So that's addressed, I believe, in Ken's narrative, what they're gonna do with it.
Okay, so Barton's claiming that related costs associated with the sale, that Vepsa's related costs are gonna be 200,000. Out of the, what was the sale price again?
So it's like 4. something million.
And in essence, the actual related costs are more than like 600,000. And then they also have some indebtedness that they'd have to pay off. So I think they will bankroll maybe a million.
But out of that, they are, they are gonna have to pay out Vepsa. And they're not selling their hydro at this point, so they're gonna have to deal with that.
How many meters do they have?
2,000.
Is it 2,000?
2,000.
Yeah, so they're not, they're not super small. There are Vepsa members small, quite a bit smaller than them. Ennisburg is about the same size.
Jacksonville's smaller.
Jacksonville's smaller. Compared to municipals, you've got Hyde Park and Johnson, Jacksonville, they're all smaller. There was, they said in there, there was like seven smaller, I believe.
And Vepsa made a point in the literature that I was reading earlier today, that about half the utilities, public utilities in the country are less size or smaller. So that argument that it's too small doesn't hold water with me.
No, I think there's more to the story, but I mean, it's.
One could argue that there's more to the story than what's being surfaced, yes.
I think so.
So there's, obviously Vepsa's gonna be at the public hearing. There's at least, at least Ken and I believe one other are gonna be there. The manager of Orleans is gonna be there. The manager from Morrisville's gonna be there. I'm gonna be there. The manager from Hartwood's gonna be there. Those are the ones that are planning to attend at this time.
I'm driving over to.
You're gonna represent us and Reggie? Are you representing Vepsa or both?
We're all gonna be, Julia said she's bringing the Vepsa t-shirts.
We'll be representing Vepsa as we go. So, yeah, I was nominated chair again.
I, I wanted to bring that out so that people in the audience would know that our position with Vepsa.
And I'm the treasurer.
That I didn't know.
Yeah, I've been the treasurer longer than Reggie's been the chair, actually.
But you get elected every year.
Yep.
Yes.
And your meeting was week or two ago?
Last week.
Now, congratulations, both of you are, so you still got the job.
Nobody was, nobody was hammering the door down.
No, I guess they like the way I hold the meetings.
Well, Mr. Nolan is happy to have you, I'm sure.
He is. He did say that. Okay, so that's all I got on that.
It's trouble.
Okay, is there anything else that is to be brought up, or wants to be brought up? Alan?
Uh-huh.
Because I think the only thing that's left is executive session to discuss real estate, or someone could say personnel.
Well, it's the real estate and personnel. I have something to come up.
So if there's nothing else to be said right now, I'll entertain. Who's that?
Gordon. He's moving again.
All right, no. Hey, real quick, Adam, if you want help with the slides, you'd be willing to donate those. Thanks for the bridge you had to do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Definitely, I'm trying to do it.
Okay.
Thanks, Gordon.
Thanks, Gordon.
Yeah, thank you.
We need him. So, if that being said, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss real estate and personnel.
So.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to go into executive session. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
With a pose, okay, we're in executive session.
Recording stopped.